Make the motion to approve. All second. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Pose motion carried. Okay, on to public forum.
Yeah, David, if you, it's Ryan, right?
Lance.
Lance. There is a Ryan in our phone call the other day.
Ryan, Ryan is the project manager. I'm operations manager, so.
Got to keep all the managers straight. Lance, we're glad you came with David. And just a little bit of the preface. We've been having conversations over the last, I don't know, week to 10 days about winter conditions and how to, you know, prepare for those types of things and talking about budgeting and our contingency and it's really, in a, in an essence, really been good to cause us to reflect on where we're at in the project, what's still needed. And as I was discussing with David and Andy the other day, really, in my opinion, there's, there's just two major pieces the district wants to see happen. Number one, the project's done on time, and number two, comes within budget. And that's why we hire these folks to ensure that those two things happen. And that's their number one job. Of course, there's a contingency in play when things come up or, you know, whatnot. And as we shared, our goal is not necessarily spend the entire contingency. You know, it's kind of like an allowance you give your child. If you say you've got $10 to spend, well, then I'm going to spend 10. So we still have other things that are going to need to be done from a district level. And we'd like to not have to spend all of our contingency, but if it's warranted, that's exactly what it's there for. So that being said, the, I'm going to have the board, David, do you want to have the board pull up? There's a couple things in there. One's the, I don't know, the packet that shows what Tim has up right now. What's that?
It's just called summary.
The summary sheet that has several, several sheets. And then there's the other one on just like where we're at with the spending currently. I don't know what that one's titled, but is that attached to that, Tim, on yours?
Yeah, it's a separate.
Nineteen to 12.
Yep.
Okay, so we want to look at number 19, correct? And it should be in there. So David, take it away.
No, I appreciate that. And I, I guess you would allow us to just talk a little bit about where we've come from. Helps us know where we are and where we're going. You can cut any of this. This is meant to be on pause anytime you want to get more information. Further beyond this stack of stuff, if there's anything else on your mind, we could chase down. Today would be great. We've got the expert builder here and. Well, let's, let's start with that page one, summary page, the schedule. At the very beginning, by state schedule did include an August completion date. We have lost considerable time in the courtyard and we'll talk about that. I know you've seen those pictures. I mean, the guys said, you know, they called me, Dave, we're hand digging around these gas lines. It's kind of, kind of nuts, but we'll, we'll, we'll show that in a moment. Winter conditions, we had a whole stack of things that were variable, things that were predictable, but things that we didn't know the number of. We put that stack of stuff in the contingency fund, as noted. And, you know, as, as you've mentioned, you folks counted the cost and, and put things in place such that this could be successful from the, from the beginning. So I felt pretty dang good about it. You guys had, had the provision to say, we're going to make sure this comes through to completion. We want and expect to be in the five to six percent range. Who the heck knows, you know, what's in front of us? So the most important requirements, I won't repeat that. We understood it was schedule and cost. Keep the cost low dictated a lot of decision points, and they still are. That, that's a main driver because we didn't know what the number was. I said, what's the number, Andy? And Andy said, I have a number. I'm not going to share that with you. I, I get it. So thus, every single dang thing up till this moment has been cost driven. So, so communication, I don't want to belabor this, but it's been, I guess, before we began, we sat down and talked about things. First, it was contingency can run between five to 10% for a project like this. It has to do with the, the size of the project. It's three million, 10 million, and the complexity of it. We thought and still do believe that five to six range is going to be probably the, the right place. Now, so that's 152 to 182. And the funding plan, we listed a whole bunch of things that we needed to look for and the reason why. We had a great price come through with Rockstar Truly Builders. We're working with several builders. They're the best ones I'm working with on several school projects. They're, they're killing it in terms of process and structure. So still feel pretty good about that. So thereafter, then we came to the board and submitted it all. And then the council was, let's have the 10%. Okay, something is screwy, we're going to be able to finish well. So that was the, the message that was sent. And in addition to that, we have owner items that we need to make sure they get funded as well. So that's kind of a preface. I won't go into page four. It's just as the email before, before we met with you, just identifying everything. Page five is a kind of a courtesy. This was all the things the district said, you know what? We're going to go tackle that. We don't need you guys to design that toilet paper tissue dispenser. We'll go do that. You know, we'll get this thing free, that thing free. But that's here as a courtesy tonight because again, the business is holistic, clear, over and over again messaging. So let's pause on this just a moment on this page right here. These were the things that could bite us. Okay? So what were they? Slab and footing substrate. So after they redid the site, then we test the soil. Then we know what we're dealing with and only then. So we're done with that now. We've done that. So we're past that. The other thing that we have is the winter conditions. Their approach was, let's give the district kind of the worst it will be. That way we can come in under that. No one likes to have this hard conversation. So the goal is to be under that, correct? Yeah. But the thing is, we know what that is. We know. The next piece was building complexity. We still have some of that. It's still a complex building. We'll talk about that. The next thing was independent testing. So the testing for the protection of the district needs to be, as you know, independent. That cost has already been established, 33,000. We're going to test the soil. They're testing the concrete for compaction. They're going to test the steel connections. So we're past that. Okay? Unclear routes of underground pipes. That's the thing that's killing us. We knew it was there. We didn't know how much, but we've, we've gone through that. Now we know we're past it. Okay? Metal building design loads. So after the G C comes in, then they go and design the pre-engineered metal building. Then we know kind of loads hitting the structure. Then we know what kind of soil we need. We didn't know any of that when we first met. Now we know. Now we're past that. Okay? And finally, the grease interceptor. You're shifting this, what is like a small car. We're shifting it in ground that we don't know what's in it. That's a risk. That's done. Okay? So guys, we're not out of the woods, but there's a whole lot of things we know now that we didn't know before. I just want to clearly convey that. I feel good about that. Complexity, all we're saying here is that if we are, if we're a, a building that adds on to a building, that's cake. That's, you know, who are builders here? Any, any of you builders? This is cake. This is not cake. This is, not to say that it's impossible, hard, but it's what we do. But there's just more complexity when you're tying on one, two, three, six places. There's some complexity with that. We're working through that together. The underground is the reason we're here today. Again, many unknowns they faced in the courtyard delayed and increased winter conditions cost. Original schedule would have had the walls backfilled, masonry bearing walls constructed and a steel set on the conventional steel building. So that's where the classrooms are. And the pre-engineered metal building foundations would have had that waterproofed and backfilled. So their schedule had you completing in August, having all of the stuff that costs more money with 12 inches of snow done before that occurred. So I don't know if you want to speak. Next two pages, they've listed all these discoveries, but basically it's water, water lines. What do these water lines go to? Nobody knew. So Andy is helping the team. We're testing out the flow of water. Gas lines, are they live? There's things that was supporting the district that can't just cut it. There's things that had to have a continuation of service. So they had to deal with it cautiously and carefully so that did not affect teaching and learning. But anything else you want to share with, with this business?
No, it's just, it's unknowns. They were all unknowns. The, you know, typically you, you get an as-built drawing. When we're done, you're going to get an as-built drawing. It's going to show you everything we found, everything we relocated, where all the lines are at that we either interacted with or we installed ourselves. And unfortunately, I don't think you had a good set of as-built drawings from the last projects you had because then some of this, at least some of this would have been a known. And unfortunately, they weren't known. You never know what you're going to find when you dig in the ground. And here we found Pandora's box in the ground. So it, it delayed us and that's why we're, the winter conditions were going to happen. They are what they are because of the delay we had. We should have had some of the masonry up on that classroom section. We should have had the foundations backfilled. We should have had the waterproofing on the other side. And part of that, you know, well, why didn't you start earlier? Why didn't you start over here? We couldn't, we could have come and torn up your courtyard and then it would have just sat. We wouldn't have dug in the ground because we didn't know what the foundation, final foundation design was for the pre-engineered metal building. Pre-engineered metal building is, is, it is a steel structure, but the, that company owns the engineering of that building. That you, you save money by not paying him to design it and you're paying our guy to design that pre-engineered building. And that's, they've supplied them every day. They have people on. But the reactions of that, how that building is going to react with the foundation and the ground beneath it, we don't know that until that building is fully designed. So we can't dig that foundation until we have all that. So that's why we didn't come here, you know, August the first and start digging things up. Could have done a little bit and then we'd have left. And then you're going to be asking Andy and you're going to be asking us, where are you at? What are you doing? Well, we're waiting on the bill, waiting on this. That's why we didn't start right out of the box. We indicated on our initial schedule that we were going to be here on September 22nd, starting to dig and we are daily reports. Triple B was here on 9/19th. So, you know, we hit right where we wanted to be. Then we hit the courtyard and it just hit the brakes and we got slowed up. The, and then another part of it is, you know, the average temperature for yesterday and today was in the 40s typically, you know? It's not, we don't, you know, when I was younger, this is what winter was, you know? You got to Thanksgiving and it's pretty touch and go whether you're going to be doing any construction throughout the year, you know? And unfortunately, architects, not a boost, I'm going to give them a harder time. Architects and engineers think you build all year now, you know? It used to be when you're in construction, Thanksgiving hit, by Christmas, you're laid off. You're not going back to work, you know? And it is, uh, technology's advanced, things are much better. We, we do have the ability to work a lot longer. But that's why we're where we're at. The delays in that courtyard pushed us back to where we're, we either stop or we have to provide heat and to keep moving.
How far behind schedule are we right now?
Courtyard's pushed us back roughly a month.
It's our intention to share, share things that may not be visible to you. Something that might not be visible when they weren't here, they were doing things here like chasing down the content for the pre-engineered metal building. So they were, they're on site because we have to extend your building in the same configuration. So they were boots on the ground, measuring the slopes and the angles and the height. So those activities were taking place so they could move that forward as quick as possible. So that activity was present.
It's the middle process, getting contracts written, getting some bills in, getting things designed, getting the, you know, things approved by his team that yes, this does need to design. So things were happening just because we weren't here. Doesn't mean that we weren't working on it. It's what we're, what we're trying to get across.
So, you know, again, the idea is bring data to you. And so what's, one might say, what happens if winter conditions are furnished and installed by the general contractor on day one, right? That happens some, a lot of times, a lot of times it does not, but a lot of times it does. So let's say, let's throw out a scenario. If you had good weather and the courtyard did not occur, they probably would have thrown 60 grand at it. All park. And it's, it's about, they hope you'll end up spending 20, but we don't know what will occur. So if 30 was used, 30 goes to the G C in that scenario, right? And if you think back to the cost scenario that Andy gave me, I didn't want 30 grand going back. So the idea was let's be more surgical, more collaborative in nature and not just throw money at the wall. That was the thinking, let's save money. But if bad weather occurs and if 60 were allowed or, or, or given, but lo and behold, we have a courtyard problem and it costs 90. Uh, the, the president of the organization said, we have to come back for a change order because of that courtyard, you see? So they would have had to come forward because they didn't have any power over that courtyard. You see, that's some of the complexity, but I know that may be a question. Why, why was it structured in that way? By state's precedent, winter conditions, they have an example of a district that spent 300,000 more, but we don't know the magnitude of that. But the point is they had some general conditions, we had, they had some money for winter conditions. They exceeded that and the district had to pay more due to the weather event.
It was weather delays, soil delays on that project as well. And so we were going to be pushed back and we're going to get in their new school and they had to be. And so we did the same thing we're doing now, you know? Hey, we have $100,000 for winter conditions in our, you know, we were to cover winter conditions. It was a two-year project. We're going to build this building. It's going to be enclosed by this time. And so all we're going to have to do is pump some heat in here. We're not going to have to build temporaries. We're not going to have to be putting ground heaters down. We're not going to be tenting masons and tending for the concrete guys. It didn't work out that way. It was cold and rained every day on that job and they, we had soil issues. And so it got pushed back. District recognized that that was an issue that was out of our control. We can't control where we, where we build the building and what we find when we put the hole in the ground. And they ended up paying us in excess of $300,000 in winter conditions and acceleration costs, paying overtime to get back on schedule to get them into their building. So it's, it's not, it's not something that, that doesn't happen ever. This isn't the first time this has happened to a district or to us.
I called them before we met. Is there any way we could even have careful monitoring so the district knows that you're dotting every eye and you know exactly what's occurring? And of course, you know, what they said is we do that already. We plan on doing that, kind of the temperature of what occurred, so they can monitor the, you know, winter conditions to make sure that the money is done correctly.
Jason, who's on site, is your project superintendent. He's creating a daily report already. And that daily report says what contractors were here, how many contractors of those, of that contractor, how many employees did he have on site? What did they work on? What were the weather conditions? What did he encounter? So his daily report says, he put a hole in the ground and we found a gas line or we found this on those days. And then, you know, so many days while we're waiting for an answer, we're waiting for an answer. We tried to pivot over here and we found something else. So that, that daily report is, it's invaluable to us, especially in the office because we're not here every day either. We're not, you know, it's, we trust, we trust him and that's what he's doing. He's, he's here for both of us, so.
I have another question, sorry.
Yeah, it's good. More questions?
I'm just, I'm just thinking through, okay, we're a month behind schedule. Winter came a month early, so to me, that's two months. So where do we expect the project to be in two months from now? And are we, are we expected to be back to where we don't need additional considerations for, for winter conditions in two months? Because that puts us into February, right? It's still going to be winter, but I mean, are we going to be looking at an enclosed shell that we just got to pump heat into at that point or?
What we have to get through now is we have to get the block up and set the steel and pour some concrete. Steel guys, unfortunately, they're not as, they don't get to be as comfortable as the mason and the concrete guy. They got to work in the cold, they got to work in an inclement weather. We have to get the mason, we have to get a, a building and then we can enclose the building and then we're just heating that, you know? We have a structure that we can heat. And now we don't have a structure that we can heat. And so we have to build temporary, temporary structures. Like we have one built around the foundations now to get the waterproofing on. Now we can backfill. It's backfilled and the mason has to start. Well, he can't build masonry walls that freeze. We have to keep that warm so that it is structurally sound. And so intent, you know, barring, I can't predict the weather, but yes, we anticipate we would be out of that. We have built in heating through the winter months all the way through. You know, once the building's up, then we can heat it inside as well. And again, our intent is that we are able to get some of that back, but it's not a toll. We get moving and we move forward. We're out of that. As far as the overall schedule, yes, we're behind a month right now, but we have a little fluff in the schedule we produced because that's what we do every time we build. We squeeze things down. We try to keep things moving, but give us a little time if we have something that gets messed up so that we have a little recovery time. And so we're still, we're running out of that, but we're still on track to get you down.
What else is on your mind before we complete the last few pages? Anything else that you have a question about?
Do you have anything else? Just call it forum, you're public too, so.
We set out, you know, to go get some data. I mean, we get, we need to get data for you. You know, it's easy to find winter conditions that were much more. It's easy to find winter conditions that were much less. But the thing is, finding the apples to apples comparison, we found it to be, what they told me it was and in fact was, that it's impossible because every building's going to be different. You have a different foundation than your buddy up the street does. You have a better one. You have a better moisture barrier. You're at the bottom of the hill. You should have, you should have that. Some are masonry, some are not. So I just wanted to throw that out there because otherwise you just kind of latch on to, well, jeez, that's expensive. But it really depends on the building type and the weather conditions and the schedule. Gosh, we started in July. We have one scenario. Gosh, we started in, in September, we have a different scenario. So it's building type, soil type, schedule, start. So we did call other companies as well. And again, no disrespect to our friends, the laborers here, but we asked other companies on your behalf. Tell us, that's hard because they didn't know your building. We explained it, same story, masonry. It's all in, in the winter now. And the first, one group said it's going to be like 60 to 90 because he's figuring 20 to 30,000 per month. Okay, so that was one builder. Another builder said, Dave, if I had to tell you, it's three to 5%. She was, that's a lot. Then if you get more surgical with it, take it down just to the building. And we don't have the same building base that he was thinking of. It's going to be around 60 range, you see? So he, that guy was kind of wild from 60 to 1, 150. So it's kind of hard. I'm just reporting to you what these fellows said to have no skin in the game at all. They do not care. And this is what they, this is what they shared. So we're trying to bring data to you. Uh, the folks said that we should probably share the things that we're doing to try to stretch the construction dollar. So page seven, page 14, I guess, these are things that we're off doing. And I'm not, we're not looking for thanks or applause. We're just telling you, we're, we're working with you. We don't get one cent for any of this. None of this is in our contract. And some things are larger, uh, work for, for us and some things are smaller. But what I'm telling you is it's all extra, that we're only doing it to try to save money. If we eliminated your firewall, we didn't have to do that. We hired an independent code consultant. We talked to the state of Iowa two, three times. We didn't get one cent for any of that. You got a little money back. And we keep doing that. We've got another change order going out today. Hopefully we get a nice credit from that. That's because Andy found a, a nice opportunity for savings. We've got an opportunity at the top of your roof that we're going to talk about in a few months. Hopefully we can stretch your schedule a little bit or collapse it. Collapse your schedule a little bit to get a better barrier, save a little tiny money. I think we can. So we're off doing these things, happy to go through any of those, but not one cent and it's not in our contract. But we're trying to do, uh, we're trying to work with, working with and for you as your advocate. No. So I hope, uh, hope that makes sense. The last page is just extra information so you could kind of see what's behind some of the pricing information. Sometimes people like to know more information. That's all it's there for. But the goal is, as they say there, hopefully they can move this forward quickly and lower the cost. The intent was to give the worst case and then reduce it in possible.
We have all the equipment right now to continue on. I guess that's my, my question. Are we still waiting to build these? I'm not a contractor tents to get the heat going. Are we still waiting for that or is that going? We're, we're up and going.
We had approval to tent for the waterproofing.
Just for the waterproof?
Yep. Those tents are built and the heat is blowing in those right now. So that portion is moving forward. Okay. Tents for the mason, he comes and builds his scaffold and then we have to provide plastic and clips and enclose that. That's all then, that is not, we have not purchased.
We've done it, correct?
Correct. We met last week.
Right.
To the tent. The foundational piece was under 10,000, which I'm working with more. I have that authority to allow. Um, and what they're asking for tonight is 99-ish. What's the, whatever that total is. And I said, well, you need to go in front of the board on that and explain where we're at.
Right.
How that works.
And I guess that's my question is why wasn't that, and I could be wrong, but why, why didn't we see that at the beginning? Why wasn't that in everything that we had looked at before that planning through this schedule that we knew in December that yep, there's that, for that tenting of this process, that is already in there? And I'm just curious why we did not see that ahead of time? Or if I missed it when going through all that? I mean, so anyway, that's, that's my question.
For sure, for sure. I guess we put winter conditions in the bucket of things we're going to have to deal with. We believe the cost would be in the 40 to 50,000 range because of the project's scheduled start date. Uh, and they did too, by the way. Had that been in there, that's the approximate cost they would have allocated for that. So we fully anticipated, we knew it would snow. That's why when we got that good cost, we had to press the timeout button and say, we're going to need some contingency. We're going to have some heavy dollars coming our way. We just will. We will. So that, that's why we, we said it could range 5 to 10%. And we listed conditions on that page, just on page four. Winter conditions is, is right there in the middle. In other words, that's one of the things that we listed and, and would need to be supported from that contingency plan.
I guess the disappointing part though is I can read that, but when there's no number tied to it, you know, that's, that's, that's where we as a group see the numbers and we need to know what's going on, kind of thing. So that, that's, you know, I understand that it was in there, but it just, I wish there would have been a clearer understanding of what that would cost because I have, you know, I would have no idea what that is. And so basically what we're hearing is because of the delay with the, you know, the, what do you guys call it? Courtyard, what is courtyard?
Yep.
So that pushed us back. And now because of that, this is what's causing this tenting issue, right? Okay.
Yeah, our original schedule, we wouldn't.
Right.
We wouldn't have needed that.
Right.
We would have been past that.
Okay. Okay, got you. I see how that's all coming. Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't have needed those tents had we been able to get past that and be.
Right. But going into this, we all knew that that area was going to be, we're having conversations I had with Andy about that, about how it was going to be terrible. So how we should have known, you know, on your end to tell us, you know, hey, you know, and this may, this may turn into a month, this may turn into an extra whatever. So that could have been, you know, on there in timing wise. And I get it, we're not mother nature. We have no idea what's coming, but at least we would have seen that. And that's just where I'm disappointed a little bit, just because of that. Because that's a heck of a chunk of money to throw at us now, you know, when that could have been in the whole other, in this whole thing. You know, when that could have been in the whole other, in this whole thing and we could have just moved on from that. So I totally received that and I believe that's true.
You know, fully transparent. I thought there were two underground pipes that we had to contend with. Certainly not look gas lines, live power, power lines. And I thought we were going to spend a lot of money on dirt. Lots of money. That's where I thought all the bucket of money would go to is the dirt, the soil to support this pre-engineered building that was yet to be designed. Although, oh, we didn't really need that much for dirt. I didn't think we'd spend that much, a hundred grand. I thought it would be fifty. So I thought we'd spend the bulk of it on the, on the soil. So I was pretty happy when we got out. I mean, I was a sigh of relief, really. We didn't spend our money on the dirt because no one likes to do that anyway.
Nobody sees that.
So that's where I thought.
You don't see where that went. You know, your building's not even pretty or it's not.
Yep.
You know? And then, and then to speak on some of that, that winter conditions.
Yep.
If we're bidding a job and we're looking at what's going to happen in this area in the last seven or eight years, we don't plan on really pumping heat into a building until around Christmas. Our goal is to be under roof by the first of the year. Because then we can heat the building. We generally don't have, you know, that big of a cost. And unfortunately, we got pushed back a month and now winter's here.
In regards to the ninety-nine thousand or whatever it is we're looking at. You mentioned tenting heaters, some snow removal involved in there. Just give me an idea like where everything's going.
So.
It doesn't need to be super detailed.
Okay. When you're going to tent for a mason, you know, he's going to build a wall here, you know, from me to that wall. We have to completely enclose that. Well, that's probably going to take three or four guys, the better part of a day to get that enclosed. Well, then he gets that wall built, that tent stays there. He's going to move over and build the same wall over there or that back wall behind you. We have to tent that entire thing. So we have to buy the plastic. We have to buy the tie wire. We have to put the labor into that. Now we have to provide a heater to go in there to heat that. We have to heat that one over there. Now this one is cured. Now we have to tear it down. Well, there's a day for three or four guys to tear that one down, move that over to build another wall. So it's, it's, it's labor.
More labor than materials, really.
Yep. And you have to do it safely. So that's, it, it's not fun. We tell our guys they got a tent to mason, it is not anything they like to do. So. I think the biggest thing, and I've shared this with the board and I've shared it with you guys. We've always been very open and honest. It's just, it's that sticker shock of thinking that half your contingency goes out the window. You know, it's something that's somewhat predictable, knowing that winter is a, you know, it's always going to be an option. I, I appreciate the, the fact that let's say we had a beautiful winter and let's say right now it's fifty degrees and we don't have to spend that money. I appreciate that. Right, that mentality. And like I've said to the board and I'll, I'll say to you and say to the community, you know, when we're in a, a public domain, we've got to be risk averse. You know, we don't have the ability to go out and find more investors if we come up short or up our product price to cover our, you know, overage in some type of building project. We get what we get and if we come up short, that's a lot of egg on the face as a, as a community school district. So that, that was where my concern was of just, you know? And again, from my background, I've been involved in four or five projects and two here and a big one next door and other small ones. We've never had a winter conditions conversation before. And those were all done over the winter. So that was just kind of the shock of like, you know, why now? And that type of deal. So I think moving forward, you've worked with other districts in this capacity. When you put winter conditions on there, say, hey, we're rolling the dice here a little bit. Are you okay with that? Number one. And number two, just know that that could take up half your contingency. And so there's not that sticker shock of, oh my gosh, this is just one piece out of a maybe a very much bigger contingency puzzle that we may have to pull from.
Like Joe was just saying though, just have that conversation. You know, that is not such a, you know, hey, this is out there. Right, let's think about it, you know? And let us make aware that this has never even popped in. Can't speak for you guys, but never even popped in my mind. That something like this will come up. And that's, that's just a huge number for like, for in my mind, for what, you know, from what.
And you're, it's like the dirt. You're not going to see it.
Right.
Right. You know, it's not.
Does it change the way the law?
You're not getting a giant windmill producing power on top of your building for that money. It's, it's just going to keep us moving.
I have another question. We've got one more big unknown in this contingency plan. It's building complexity. So can you give me any sort of an idea of how, how out of hand that could get? Just knowing that we're already more than halfway through our contingency here.
I think the complexity part was the building is complex. I think in my mind, we're through, the design is done. We've had a couple, you know, your buildings aren't sitting square with each other. And so we had to, we had to run through that and get some things corrected there so that at least what we're building is square. You know, you don't see it. I don't think the complexity portion, I think the last, in my mind, and that I can think of, the last complex issue, and it's not really complex, is the fire sprinkler at this point, unless something else.
And I do recall the fire suppression was listed and it had a wide range of, of prices depending where it came from, whatever. And we elected to take the high dollar figure, knowing we didn't want the surprise. We couldn't absorb it.
And we are going to see cost savings on that, as David alluded to as well. So there's, there's things that come in like, you know, the good, the even Steven. Some things come in good, some things come in bad. You know, I was thinking like that dirt situation you were talking about. And we said, am I hearing you correctly that we saved fifty thousand dollars on the dirt? Because I thought you said you were expecting a hundred and it was fifty. Did I hear that correctly?
I, I, I didn't have a number attributed to that, but I do believe it could have been fifty easily. Because it was not only, let's say the soils were super bad. So right now we're digging huge, huge columns down to bedrock at a school today. Because the ground is not, it's not going to support the building. That's our worst case.
Oh, absolutely.
Other worst case to import new soil. And thankfully, none of that occurred. That had come in so much money. That could have been in excess of fifty. And in addition to that, just getting mobilized to the site could have had more costs. There was a line item just to have people mobilized to the site and have the soil. So we have something to come up with a price for each, such that each could be tracked if that needed to occur. Right? Because it was a huge project. Most definitely, I, I believe that could have taken place easily, easily. And I do believe with consideration to building complexity, we have things in front of us. But I don't, I don't personally feel that cost is that great. So I'll give you a case in point. Today, the water comes down behind your brick and then it exits out the bottom of the brick. Okay? Well, can't do that anymore because we're putting a building up onto it. So we got to cut into your brick and give it a new pathway at the top. That's complex. Now, we're trying to come up with a way to bypass that complexity. And maybe the idea is that we loop up over your, the top of your roof and avoid that. To have a continuous waterproof membrane. So that's a complexity that I think we can work our way through. So things like that. Still connecting from the existing to the new. I mean, today we're working on drawings today to work through some of those things. And I sent them a draft, some ideas of how we could get through it, but it's low dollar.
So if we save money on dirt, if we understand correctly, that money can be utilized for some of these other complexities you're talking about.
No, that was in the contingency that we didn't.
Right, 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 right.
The bulldog. You're not money ahead, you're just not money, more money behind.
Right.
That's why I want to understand correctly.
These are all, all these buckets, the question marks, like these, any of these could, any of these could, we need to have a plan.
Imagine if the dirt had come in fifty thousand and we've got this on top. We have no work contingency. So we'd be very low. So like I said, that risk averse piece.
So. And again, I, I, just to summarize, I don't need it for the labor. I guess the point is, is when we were given an example of the water suppression and we had the choice to make, do you take the cheap guy and hope that you don't have to do it his way? Or do you, you just own it from the get-go and pay the big dollar and know you're okay and hope you can save a little? That's the type of communication I think that we would have preferred in some of the conditions that we, that would have said, seven out of 10 years, we're not going to have to spend the money on the tents. Three out of the 10, it could cost up to a hundred thousand dollars. And then if we wanted to allocate middle of the road and say, add fifty to be safe, we'll dip into the rest or, you know, just help us build the budget. Is that fair? Am I summarizing that well?
Yeah.
So we approved this tonight and that'll give you the go ahead to start the tenting. Yep. Tomorrow. Got to get backfill, we got to get the waterproofing done, backfill. And then we can start playing some block. So.
So when approximately? What are we looking at?
I would have to talk to Jason to see exactly. I didn't get up here enough time today to drive back there to life and see where they're at. I've seen pictures, but it's kind of hard for me to, for me to picture. So our intent would be, right now, our intent is to backfill Friday. Would it be possible? I think this has been great just to give an update to the board. Would it be possible sixty days from now, whether it's be a Zoom, Google Meet or whatnot, to give an update on where you're at? How things are looking on the timeline? Not necessarily have to attend in person, but at least give the board an update. See where we're at and our contingency and just kind of. And our pay application, if your change order is approved, that change order will be listed on our pay application we present to Dave. And so you'll see how much of that money we spent moving forward. So.
Okay.
We'll get a monthly, get a monthly update. That way more than happy to drive up, more than happy to. Well, like I said, you're just going to join us virtually so the board can ask questions and, you know, ten, ten minutes. Here's where we're at, here's where we're going.
I love it.
Yeah, whatever you need. No, I, in person for me, I like a little better. I appreciate it being in person, but I'm trying to make it user friendly on your end.
We still respect your talent.
That's all I'm saying. I have two hours from home, but I, I know that's in person, I much prefer. Well, we love that, but I don't. You don't expect one soon or you want to?
If you, if you had a day where you needed to be on site for something anyway, and you could use your drive up to be justified to be on site and we only retain you for another hour or so, then that'd be great.
It, it doesn't matter. Whatever, whatever you need. Well, you and David decide what you want to do, but I'm just throwing that out there as an option. That's all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, guys. Andy, is there anything you want to mention?
I just said, Andy.
Anything not to say. God bless Andy. He is a snowplow, snowplow headquarters.
That's all I feel like I've got done lately.
Well, I guess just one thing about this whole situation. I've talked to David about it. You know, if we did build something like into the bid originally, we wouldn't even be having this conversation really. But the, the school would still be paying for it no matter what.
I think it's more of the, yes, we'd be paying for it. I agree with you, Andy, but it's more of the upfront, we see it and we can plant that.
And I do like that idea, David, kind of held back. And now we're seeing it a little more. Would I like to have something put in there in the beginning? Absolutely. Just to not be such a hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money for something that we don't get anything out of. So.
My fear is always if you have one of those, it's like, well, what's next? You know, I mean, that, that's always my fear. Like, well, what other contingency in here is like, oh yeah, and by the way, it could be seventy-five thousand here. You know, I mean, so it's just.
I didn't say it yet, but here's the deal. You put up plastic and you get fifty mile an hour winds like you predicted. What is that going to do?
Good deal.
That, that's an honest question.
Three, four in plastic. We have been through that before. It doesn't, it doesn't tear it all the way down typically. These weren't a good spot back here. I mean, it's protected fairly well with the building. Thank goodness it's not out, you know.
Again, you're not wanting to buy once, you do want to buy once and cry once. And this is one of those things where, no, we're crying twice.
The other side of that is that change order, it's on us after that. It can blow down.
One time and then.
It, it blows down five times. It's still on us. It's hope. We don't want to build it so it's going to blow down one time, you know, because it's.
That makes sense.
You know? Okay. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you, guys.
I believe the waterproofers were here today.
Yes.
And so that should be either completed or tomorrow.
Tomorrow, they're supposed to be, they are, they have been told and know in certain terms to be out of our way Friday morning.
Yeah, and I think the metal guys for the building are going to be here Friday as well.
I think.
So we shouldn't be seeing something going up here pretty soon. But we do got to get the backfilling done and then the metal guys will really be at it. So we'll, we'll start seeing some progress here pretty soon. Like physical progress, I guess.
Something going up.
Yep.
I will say this, looking at the 10 day forecast, which I'm trying to get through this weekend. Next week starts to look better.
Yep.
Supposed to be in the thirties for, you know, you get to an excuse day or whatnot for a stretch. So that helps with the heating of a tent.
Yes. It's, it's the overnights is where you're running.
Yep, yep.
Got to maintain that.
Yep.
That temperature.
Yeah.
The thirties and forties also help with the version of, of ice to water and, and frozen mud to.
I don't know what that, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know the exact day. Should be within the next week.
Yep.
So Mason.
Real quick too, thanks for all your work. Moving all that snow this weekend. I'll be out there several times, so.
I probably woke you up a couple of.
You did, but it's okay.
You want to know that, you know, you do.
Thank you.
Looks like I might have to do some more this weekend.
It looks like it.
Thank you again for coming, Andy.
Thanks Lance. I think you gave me my number. I don't know if it's included any of that, but. Okay, call, whatever. Okay, well, if there's anything to, the board can email me and pass along and we can put people in. Yep, I, I know, I think my email's on with, it's one thing with you. So anybody wants to give me a call or has any questions, I'm, I'm available, so. All right. Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks, guys.
Are there any other questions that y'all have for me?
Well, thank you again for your effort.
Thanks, Andy.
Appreciate it.
Hey, have some dessert.
Yeah.
Maybe tomorrow. You soon, there's going to be leftovers. Joy always has. All right, well, let's get back to, hey, recognition. We want to recognize a very special birthday tonight here at Happy Joe's. No, we're recognizing Rob Metzger, Dr. Rob Metzger for his, yes, twelve years coming to an end tonight. Rob started in the fall of two thousand thirteen. I was visiting with him. Things have changed over the years before there were four year terms, there were three. And so just trying to recollect when Rob started. But when Rob started, we were on the cusp of a large building project, our largest one we've had here, I think in the history of the school in terms of the baseball field, the new cafeteria and obviously the new elementary and tearing down the old. But he came on in September, back when our elections were in September. And that bond referendum was passed in February. So Rob played a big part in, you know, marketing that bond referendum and then that whole building process over that two and a half year window. So that was a major undertaking. So we appreciate that and, and all the improvements we've made as a district, Rob was also a part of the board when we all learned school finance very well with our enrollment struggles at the time and, and a lot of improvements throughout the district academically. Staff wise, I think of bargaining, you know, Rob, you know, the staff can thank you for the idea of the bonuses during those lean years and so you're.
Stacy for breaking you happy.
Well, I know, but it's small test. I know, but that came from you and, and so we'll always appreciate what you've done. Your mark will definitely be felt here. So thank you.
I, I can certainly speak then, my short tenure, you've been a tremendous ally in, in helping me learn and try to figure this out, so I really, really appreciate it.
Oh, no, it's, we've had great teams and continue to have great teams, so. That's one thing about Rob, whenever I would text him something, I'd be like, hey, you know, I'd ask him a question. He was always, always has the time to answer. He always, you know, it's a very nice detailed text that he gives back and I told him the other day, I said, hey, you plan on still getting these? So.
What's a rabbit? A word that I know, and so I like to hear his, his other side.
And that's the beauty of a board is you want different viewpoints and then you come up with the best solution by hearing everything.
I also appreciate those long text messages.
Long texts.
Very good. No, appreciate it, Rob.
The community should appreciate what you've given.
Yep, 100%.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I still got the rest of the meeting, so. But anyway, I want to recognize your recognition points.
Okay, Joy, you are up.
Is there anything from the, basically the bills?
Basically.
The business and financial portion, yeah.
Nothing to talk about really?
You know, I, I was thinking after our work session, we were just talking about, you know, the financials, I was thinking as a farmer, Tommy, to me what the financials are is if you're a farmer and you look at what you spent in the month of December.
Doesn't make you puke?
Right, but you know in the back of your mind, hey, I've got income coming.
Sooner or later, this is supposed to be.
And this is even better, in yours, it's still a huge variable, you don't know what you're gonna get, right? But when you look at the financials here, if you look in September and see a snapshot and say, well, why do we have more money here? Well, we may not get the draw till October, you know, it's quarterly and those different things, and that's why at the end of the day, it still comes out of the scorecard on what that number is.
I agree.
Because it's a year long process, not a monthly, it should be equitable, 1/12th, 1/12th, that's not how it works. And I just thought as a farmer, you'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, and the only thing I would say is, you know, even during the marketing year, I keep track of what's my, what's my average price, there's certain KPIs that I'm going to pay attention to and I only need about five or six of them, just keep it simple and, and know where I'm at.
And again, the tough part for a farmer is you don't know what the market's doing to do. For us, it's, it's fixed.
Yes.
You know, once we know our enrollment and our new money and everything else, it's a fixed amount, so, but anyway.
I understand your point.
I just thought I, that was my analogy I thought of after we met last time. But are there any questions on the bills that need to be approved?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose motion carry. Administration report, Mr. Meyer, please.
Interview tomorrow and Friday, we have two interviews tomorrow, two interviews on Friday, I hope to have a candidate in place, I'd love for them to start January 5th, second grade position, second grade position, yeah, we started to do, I shared with the staff today, the room changes and where people are going and we've started to relocate some items and things like that, so I can come in and help me in the admin crew over Christmas break and make sure we're in there that way, that new staff person can get in here and roll on the 5th of January. Gonna have a hard time, I feel like, creating class lists, you know, those kids have bonded already with the teachers and, you know, it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge for that, but ultimately it's better, I feel, for the kids and for the staff, you know, quite honestly, I mean, it's a good thing, but it's kind of a bittersweet.
Yeah.
You know, thing for the kids on that end. So a lot of, a lot of musical things going on here, fifth and sixth grade, felt like deja vu, see all the parents coming for the band concert last night that were just here for the, the winter concert, the kids did fantastic. I told Mrs. Hewitt this morning that fifth grade band might be the best fifth grade band I've heard in my entire career. There's like 37 of them, it was fan, it was fantastic, really, and then the growth that fifth grade shows to sixth grade, I mean, they sound like a completely different band in that span, so really, really a fun filled time, you know, kind of that festive of the season kind of stuff, and then I think next week, I think the high school does all their stuff, so just a lot, a lot of night, a lot of mean things from kids going on, right? So.
Any other questions?
So I, I talked to Mrs. Cafrey after classes with the teachers or whatever, and she had some questions on space, was hoping to suggestions, I will say, I mean, because it's not an easy answer, so I guess my question in that is, tough choices were had to be made, I'm sure, but were we able to adequately?
Everybody, everybody's in a space, we've got three people together in a room, that's not ideal, but we don't have another room unless they're gonna fill the bathroom space, that's not ideal. The big room upstairs, where Title One was that, will become the classroom, that's a standard sized room, you know, as far as all the other classrooms are, and then Tricia Langley will be moving down to the conference room, which is really a, a big space, quite honestly, but it'll displace all of our IEP meetings and any kind of meetings that we had, but we can figure that out, we lived for years without a conference room space in the other building and IEP meetings still went on over there as well, so, yeah, would it be nice to have more rooms? Great, yeah, that'd be fantastic, I don't want portables, I just think that would just be an entire.
Especially with construction projects, I have no idea how you would do it.
Not even the construction, I just think portables are eyesore.
Yes.
We've got a wonderful looking building and that complex behind you, the, the fields and that, I just think those are just, they're just an eyesore, quite honestly. I do think there are spaces, if you ever wanted to have conversations about building some walls within the complex, that we could put up some walls, you know, to do that, you know, but I don't know that that is like dire.
Well, and even, even, I, I think Jamie and I kicked around a couple of spaces and she asked what, what the timeline would be if we were to try to put up a wall and she didn't understand some of the, it was appreciative to learn that there would be more to it than just having somebody come in and throw up a wall, but I guess my point was is if, yes, I think we've identified a few spaces if we needed a conference room or some, you know, maybe we can't build another classroom, but can we get the storage or whatever?
I don't think it would necessarily need to be a classroom, I think you're talking about just spaces, you know, it'd be nice to divvy those, those three out just a little bit from that, so. Again, I don't know that we're in a dire.
Agreed. We'll think that over, if that does become something, please bring it to a work session or whatever.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Bliss?
I have the annual de-cap review, I wanted to get that, I had Joy upload, uploaded the PDF, see you like that ahead of time. Again, we went from an 11 out of 36 to a 31 out of 36 next year, unfortunately, for reference, it won't be the same. Here's why, not their score going down, but they're adding elements to it. So they added fifth grade, so now it's five through 12 as a de-cap plan, not just your 712. So there's been a whole lot of collaboration between Grant, he does go down to sixth grade, so that really helps, and then Sarah Iselstein with regards to the type of lessons that the kids are getting, so they added that section eight below the section seven that currently exists. Some of the advancements that we have, career exploration classes that we were proficient in this year to bump that up, you know, we've, we've added some elements in there and some components, I mean, Sarah's been a part of that, that's why Sarah's here, she can interject in, but I mean, even if you look over here, college readiness, just different elements that we're trying to plug for our students, get them, give them the opportunities for this, I know, I went to the College Expo earlier in the year with Mark, with the students over to the college and, and so there's all of that that's getting put in there, some of the things that are gonna improve, we can't reflect currently, but the IJAG portion is getting in there. I've asked Natalie to come here next month for meetings, kind of give you an update where that sits, so she'll be coming, so some of that work experience will be coming through there. Melissa, congratulations to her, she got to do the five year program review right away, year one in the district for us, yes, so she was really thrilled with that. However, the positive outcomes of that were that she found out if she got serve safe certified as a manager, she could get the students serve safe certified as handlers and they could do work with our food pantry and make meals ready to eat and send those out, and that could count towards work experience, and so that was an area that we got dinged from the status of something we needed to improve, so there was a lot of those that are there, we just haven't, we haven't got the opportunity to get that done yet, so I wouldn't see that that would increase immediately, but there's a bigger vision there, so we won't go down, but I don't know if we'll get it to the advanced stage yet in those scores, but really, we're in a good spot, it'll be interesting to see how the scores come back for the five, six component and what we have to do differently there than what we're doing, you know, because you don't get the rubric ahead of time necessarily, you have the questions you gotta answer and you go with it, so.
What, what is the expectation at a five level, I mean, for.
Career exploration, which one of the things that we're putting, well, there's two things we've put in place, so Jamie contacted me earlier in the air, Jamie Cafrey, and I talked to Jamie Meyer also, but I've worked with them to help the kids that are at Benchmark and I Block, so those kids are starting on some career exploration, so I shared some different things that we've done with like junior highs, well, some things that I do in my college class that I teach, that you can put down to those surprisingly. Fifth and sixth grade, I found, actually love looking through that O-N-A and like, ooh, where's this gonna put me, what job should I get, like, so they've come up, I am so impressed with them, like, I told seniors, I'm more impressed with the fifth graders or the sixth graders list of careers than you guys, so they really put some thought into it.
And wasn't there some components too, where we had speakers coming in for different jobs and the kids were really interested, but they did an interest survey too and.
A career exploration used to be like, oh, town is a big part of it even for high school, and they completely revamped everything, so now career exploration is like this much of, who can count? Yes, they still have to have some of it, but that's what IJAG does, but then they have to have like an internship or something like that, it actually counts as work.
There's a lot of components.
And I know it's a lot of work, but I, I highly applaud your efforts because, quite frankly, I would say when I graduated, I felt like it was almost cruel unusual punishment because it was kind of like, hey, for 18 years, we told you where to be, when to be and how to be, and now all of a sudden, hey, make a choice and make sure you're careful about what you pick because it affects the rest of your life and good luck.
Well, and that's a, a good portion of what Sarah does, it's also a good portion of seller, that's why you advocate for us to keep that, it, it literally walks them through that, the parameters of the what ifs, the very, kind of like this, it's, what are the variables, if you so, so choose to do this, there's a variable, I talked with Ben Goss today about doing junior achievement with our seventh grade going to the Biz Town in Moline, you know, he's always really, really cautious with his spending, his materials are so well built, he doesn't spend his ISP funds, I'm like, you know, you always ask, you know, what, I always ask you, what do you, I don't need anything, well, I'm telling you, we can do that, ah, sure, you know, sounds great, and so that's another component that would actually count towards this, and it's a really cool thing, so those seventh graders will get that opportunity, and so we've got a lot of things going on, I, again, though, I don't want to say, oh, it's gonna be green advance next year, because until you do it, it doesn't matter if you got it in plans, it, it, it's what do you, what are you doing, right? And so I would say that we're not gonna go down, we're gonna go up in a couple of categories that I could change, like the district team members, the district statement summary, I've improved those from the, the previous, and we could potentially gain a couple of points, but we had the highest score in the whole Mississippi bad AA, so it's like, don't kick the horse too hard, right?
We also have changes we're talking about, based on the last statewide network meeting, the ISS was changing again, and they are now adding more questions, it's gonna be adaptive, the problem is now they're recommending even from third to 11th grade instead of 60 minutes per test, 80. There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of questions came up on that one and nobody had an answer for it, but that involved us building a new schedule for that day, for those days, but also it actually led to some really good discussion with staff on how we can start identifying some kids for MDSS and offering some classes that'll help them if they're not, if they're struggling, some math reading that helps them get back up to levels. Traditional sports.
The other end of things too, MCC is building into the academies now to really hit on that actual work experience piece, a couple of them are now implementing an internship portion of it, so they work with the kids, the kids get a college credit out of it, but they meet like so many hours in that semester for it, and so that's in there as well as, I think they're looking to add some more industry credentials to it, I know we've got three now with the OSHA, the serve safe, and then the CNA license that they can get, so there could be more of that coming from MCC as well, but another fun piece for, we're including the elementary, is we've got a career fair coming, they're doing a big career fair again, so the chamber is putting it on and we've been working that with them, so if anybody knows anybody that wants to come, please send them my way, I would love to get them in touch, because we're inviting fifth through 12th, so, and they're all aware of it, so it should be good.
Before the hiring, that's not very good.
But yeah, lots of exciting things.
It is exciting, really, it's good.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I wanted to reflect on what we could and, and let you ask any questions that you have.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming also.
Yeah, any questions, anytime.
Maybe when Natalie comes, if there's anything you want, Sarah's here too, she could.
Natalie deserves this, she's, she's awesome. Next year, you guys are gonna be like, Sarah who? That program, well, it's great when you have somebody that has the passion, I've seen it in West Liberty, and it does, it just, it's great the way that grows, and.
The more community of your relations that she's able to build, the, the further the program expands, it's something that doesn't stop, it just continually builds this project based learning, so once you get into a certain field, as long as we get that access and that partnership, it's just something that continues to scaffold, so, it's like she said, it, it turns into a tremendous asset.
It does, and with her, like, she came up and we met and I kind of just helped her find some students and then some things around the area, because she's not from here either, and so I gave her a few students that already have a CNA as a pathway for her students to talk to, too, that want to go that, so like, we're even building connections with our students in the school or underclassmen, so.
That has been the beauty, beauty of it is she's really tied in with the counseling department.
Yes.
Sarah and, and Grant and Mark, and it's been great, asked a lot of really good questions, that's what's important for growth, like, so.
I think that my, I mean, I'm just using my own kids as my, my sounding board, I guess, but the older we let them get before we introduce them, I think the more fight you get back from them, the, the, I don't want to do this program and why do we have to do this now or whatever, but the younger we start them, you know, I think if we start them at fifth grade and, and build into it, by the time they get to high school, it's an expectation, I should, this is what we do.
It's a norm, yeah, it's not, oh, it's something else.
Yeah.
It's a norm, it's part of the whole learning.
It's probably funner, more funner, at, at fifth grade. No, I did, I did. At fifth grade, we could probably make it more fun, and then by the time we get to high school, we can, we can.
Well, you can also add the fact that, I want to do this, realizes it's a class shift state, I want to do that.
It, it does, we've got good things going here, like, I realize a lot when I'm doing my advising, with things that like we pass down to them, like the projects that they're doing, I think they research jobs and they find out how much they make and then like they go from there with it, and then they start to see things.
And that's a part of that Biz Town too, is they look at the careers, they give them money, it's a fake scenario, you have to go through the scenario and use it, it's just, it's a lot, it makes it fun, even for the seventh graders, and that's important.
You gotta get their interest, you somehow, you gotta get them to, yeah, to want to be involved.
Correct, those opportunities, and it's just about finding opportunities that we can, we can give.
Thank you again, we appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry to tip up so much of your time.
Dr. Metzger, I will say that you never sent long text messages when I sent your class. It was all clear and concise, but I saw.
Ready to roll?
Yep. Second agenda number one.
Just custodian job description. We can invite Paul here and share some of his experiences if you'd like.
We could.
We are going to act the Thailand.
Yes.
It's a five minute.
Can you say this in 10 words?
That's my line. We want Paul, I know we didn't, I'm just saying.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda number one.
Oh, second, oh, there it is. I, I. Cause I intend to number two.
All right. First of all, you notice there's no board policies to do this month, typically on our organizational meeting night, we don't have them, so FYI, we did, Joy didn't miss it, that's just how, how we roll, but we do have A and B, which are second readings from November, from November. Okay. Letter C is our retirement incentive for FY26, the end of this year that we've done here for many, many years, which I, I certainly see a lot of value in that for many reasons. Recommend we continue to do that. Joy will put out the letters here soon and they have until February 1st, but February 1st is on a Sunday this year, therefore they have until Monday to get that in. And letter D is adoption of the, I called the FY27 calendar as presented earlier. So that's it. Under consent agenda number two.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda number two.
I'll second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Individual consent. Yes, these items, when they're major like this, if there's questions or whatnot, and we have resolutions as well, they're individual, just an FYI. But letter A is, you heard Mr. Bliss say earlier, you know, Mr. Gospin, the ISP money. That's the instructional support program. So that's, again, that learning curve of the finances. He gets the money authorized him each year and then he divises it amounts amongst his staff. Like you have X amount to spend in the business department, X amount to spend in science. So that's where it comes from, the ISP. So that being said, we need a motion, a second and a roll call vote to participate in the ISP for the next five years.
I make a motion to participate in the ISP program for the next five years.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Tim Barrett.
Yes.
Tom Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Bob Metzger.
Yes.
And Sam Wilson.
Yes.
Okay. Letter B, this is an annual thing every year in December. You can read that there, but it allows us to get a supplemental amount of well over $51,000 for enrolled and enrolled out students who are not included in the district's previous year certified enrollment count. So that being said, it gives us a spending authority of $51,000. So anytime I get a chance to up our authority based upon our students that, you know, we weren't allocated for last year, we do this every year. So I just need a motion as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve consent, individual consent item B as stated.
I'll say, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Letter C is similar in that we don't receive a lot of money. You can imagine if the district, if you have a large, I still call it ELL, English Learned Language. Now it's just English learners. I won't go into a lot of detail, but every student that you have that qualifies as an English learner, you know, English isn't primary language, we get an extra .22 weighting supplemental amount for them. Okay, yeah. And some districts, if they have a large.
.21.
Thanks, Bill. So anyway, we're allowed, we don't have many here, but we're still allowed that money. And to do that, it's $1,677, $1,677. So, and that's beyond the five years. In the past, that's just building the budget each year. But if it goes beyond five years, you have to ask for it. Kind of like the operational sharing, when it was originally put in, it was for five years only. And once that was done, it was over. They expected districts, if you shared a position, that you know what, within five years, you just ingrained that in and that ended up being more indefinite. But that's how this EL program was as well. They allow us that extra money beyond the fifth year, which makes sense because if you have somebody that comes here in first grade, they may not be proficient yet by seventh, you know, five years and then six years. So anyway, sorry, that's just a lot about a little, but that's what that is.
I make a motion to approve individual consent item C as stated.
I'll second. On favor, say aye.
Not opposed, motion carry. Letter D is what Mr. Dobson and Lance discussed earlier about the winter conditions, that change order, 89,94315.
Make the motion to approve individual consent D for the change order for the winter conditions.
I will second to keep this project moved. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
And there was no way I was going to bring this in front of the board without those two here tonight. But in general, that's why I'm like, I'm not taking that sort. And letter E is our sharing agreement with Durant for the SBO Board Treasurer, starting January 1st through June 30th of 2026. There is the operational sharing opportunity there as well as we talked about, a little bit about sharing, operational sharing. And that contract, the sharing agreement, the 2080 was approved in Durant on Monday night for the same terms, if you will. Each district has the opportunity each year to terminate that contract as long as the other district knows by February 1st, if you wish to discontinue it. If in fact, it's either A, not working for one district, B, the other, or C, the person in the role. So this isn't a forever position. It is a trial, just like it is every year. For myself.
So in this scenario though, I mean, she's only starting in January. We'd have to notify them by February that we were done in June? Is that?
Our contract only runs till June. There will be a new contract issued this spring for the following year. We would not be able to, same thing. So we'd have a year. We're not gonna know in two months. We're not gonna know.
That's my point. That's my, my.
If we have, if it's a year and a half, it's what you're getting.
Yes.
Yep. If we have concerns, there's certainly things we can address and that's what the 2080 agrees to. However, that's what the recommendation is. If both districts agree that we want to do something else, whether it's in October or May, all districts can do that. That's the courtesy in there to allow time, find it. It's not a.
Must do.
Must do.
Okay.
Particularly if it's the, let's say it's the candidate. You know, if the person in the position comes to us next October, well, I personally don't want someone in a job that they don't feel capable. If it's too much, say, hey, well, no, we can't do that till.
And that's, I guess where I was going is that I felt like our discussion went to, it was a six-month trial for all parties involved and that we would have the opportunity to regroup.
And we will. But moving forward, just know on an annual basis, that's how that works. We are finishing out this particular year.
Okay. I make a motion to approve individual consent number E for the sharing agreement with Durant Community School Districts for the SBO or Treasurer.
I will second that. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All this motion carried.
All right, Joy, do you want to present the canvas of ballots?
Yes. Okay. It says, we, the undersigned members of the Muscatine County Board of Canvassers hereby certify the following to be a true and correct abstract of the votes cast at the city school election held on November 4th. For Wilton School Director at Large, as shown by the county abstract returns, Tara Oyn received 126 votes, Alex White received 114 votes. There was a scattering of five for a total of 245 votes and they declared Tara Oyn and Alex White duly elected to the office of School Director at Large.
Does the board need it approved or is that just?
No, it's just.
That's what I thought. Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you for being a willing victim.
Yes. You have a four-year term. You can't notify us in February. You know, there is no out in your clause. But just a couple of things under the maintenance, it was discussed a little bit earlier, but you can see the change orders, one through four. One of them, three, not so much, but at the end of the day, it's almost a wash. But we're still a little nickel ahead. Any questions on those?
No.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
This is Rob.
Need to, Brad Joyce. No, because Alex is coming in. You want to use a restroom break? Hey, yeah, go ahead and shut it off for three minutes. If you need to use the restroom, grab some dessert. Rob, did you get any dessert? Did you say grab some? Do it. Looks like he could use. Jamie, Jeremiah, Alex?
No, thank you.